I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So before we go into executive session, we're still waiting for town council to arrive. I'm going to take the agenda out of order. I'm going to pull up the animal control officer in intermunicipal agreement, and I'm going to ask Chief Patty Fisher to come up and introduce, and then I'm going to ask the town administrator to explain to the board.
Sure.
Certainly. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Megan Souza. She is, has been our Ipswich, I mean, our animal control officer since ACO La Rock retired, and she is a full-time animal control officer in Ipswich.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Megan. So as Chief Fisher mentioned, in, I think, August of 2022?
Yep.
Yeah, 2022, our long-serving, very beloved animal control officer Carol La Rock notified us of her retirement in October of that same year. So once Carol retired, Megan took over and became our ACO, addressing all of Newbury's animal needs and concerns so that we didn't experience any interruption in ACO services. And sometime around November, the chiefs in the four communities got together and started talking about the potential benefits of regionalizing these services. After they kind of hashed it out with a lot of information from Megan, we, they brought the administrators and the managers into the loop, and we've negotiated the ACO agreement that you see in front of you now.
Do you, excuse me, Tracy, did you print these off? Did you guys print off yours that you got by, okay, I think Julie has them to pass out.
Mm-hmm.
If anybody needs one.
I'm sorry, Tracy.
That's okay.
Continue.
This is the budget if you want to pass it.
So we, presenting this to you tonight, I think Rowley has already voted to enter into the agreement. I don't know if Ipswich formally has, but I know Bauxford has also entered, voted to enter into the agreement, and now we're seeking your vote this evening.
We're the last.
So who's going to be on it, Trace, again?
Uh, Bauxford, Rowley, Ipswich, and Newbury.
And Ipswich will be the host community.
Yep, and I'd ask Chief Fisher and ACO Souza to maybe talk about some of the benefits that Newbury would derive from this type of an agreement. Please.
So one of the things that I think is the biggest, having worked with the previous animal control officer in the format that we had it before verse looking at this regionalization plan, is we've always struggled in Newbury with having a shelter and availability, places to put different animals that are Board of Health approved, that we have access to around the clock. For a very long time, ACO La Rock brought animals to her own home to take care of. So one of the biggest benefits is the fact that we will have access to their shelter that I'll let Megan talk a little bit more about, but is really incredible, and we would, again, have 24/7 access to that. The other thing is, our previous animal control officer, she was the full-time animal control officer for the town of Newbury, full-time animal control officer for the town of Topsfield, and backup animal control officer for Rowley. So it's not uncommon for jurisdictions to share animal control officers. The other piece that I'm looking forward to is by going into this agreement, we would be looking at proactive animal control policing, if you will, verse strictly just reactive animal control policing. They would be going to the beaches and checking for the dogs on the beach in the timeframes that they're not allowed. We would be having conversations about, you know, the plovers and things like that. And it's just been really great. I think also, the standards for ACOs are increasing, so the liability on their jobs are increasing. The history of animal control officers are, you had a farmer in town who was great with animals and had some time and would take care of it, and then kind of turned into a dog catcher. We now have higher standards in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. People have higher expectations of what they expect for care for their animals. We have stricter Mass General laws for crimes. So to professionalize the position is really important right now as well, and I'll let you jump in on anything.
Sure. Any specific questions as of now?
Oh, can you explain the difference between what the expectations of today as opposed to the expectations of maybe 10, 15, 20 years ago?
Sure. Actually, one of the things we see, or I see a lot, in the animal control world is the expectations are different depending on the municipality you're in. So even though the Mass General laws are a lot better, we do have great laws. We have great criminal elements as well for abuse, neglect, you know, dog tethering, tying dogs out in inclement weather, locking animals in motor vehicles. That has all come great strides. But in terms of municipality to municipality, some jurisdictions are on-call only, and they're only doing very specific things, whether it be loose dogs or domestic animals hit by cars. They're not doing anything with wildlife. We, in Ipswich, we do it all. I can't take credit for that. I walked into Ipswich with a chief who expected a very high bar of animal control, and I do work very closely with him to make sure we're always on the same page with that. So we do all domestic animals, dogs, cats. Then we do all livestock. We do all wildlife, and I'm actually certified for marine mammals as well, so I can actually do seals on the beach.
Exotic pets.
Hmm?
Exotic pets.
Yep. I have trading in venomous snakes. Not my favorite. Don't give me a tarantula, though, please, don't do it. Birds, birds of prey. We work very closely with environmental police, NOAA Fisheries, SeaCoScience up in Ryan, New Hampshire. So it's kind of getting to that standard everywhere is a really big goal for a lot of us who are held to that standard, is to bring all of these other municipalities up to that standard. The other big thing is quality of life. The 24/7 on-call, there's no quality of life in that. Having multiple jurisdictions but also good employees and a good schedule allows somebody to actually take a vacation, or maybe even get sick from time to time.
Yeah, so do you have a staff?
So as of right now, I do not. It's just me, and I'm covering Newbury and Rowley on top of Ipswich. I do work 40 hours a week, and then I am on-call 24/7. For me, it works, and it's something that, this is at the end of the tunnel, the light at the end of the tunnel, so it's been, it's been okay because we knew that we were working towards something bigger here. It's not something I would want to do forever, the way it is now, but in the budget you guys have, you'll see it's budgeted for another full-time person. And then, can you speak a little to that per diem? I don't really know where that ended up, the inspector.
The, I don't know where it ended up landing, do you?
Each community is going to pay their own expenses relative to the barn inspections.
Okay. So that would potentially allow for a per diem inspector to come on in barn inspection season, which is September to November, and that would take the bulk of the inspections off of the two full-time animal control officers, put it on that person, and allow us to continue to do field calls for animal control.
Okay. Any questions? Jerry?
Yes.
I'm particularly interested to hear you say that your expertise is in snakes, because I had a four-foot-long snake living by my front door last summer. So if he returns, shall I call you and what will you do?
You would call the Newbury Police Department.
I did last year, and the control officer said she didn't do snakes.
So that's one of the benefits, as she's saying. We only did livestock and domestic animals prior to this, so we would be getting the benefit of being able to help you in that situation.
So any sort of wildlife, snakes, raccoons, squirrels, what, how I handle that is, I do not have a license to trap and remove animals. That's a specialty license. I don't have it. But I take each call, I go to that residence and put my eyes on the residence because sometimes, especially raccoons, it's as simple as, well, maybe take the bird feeder down for a little while, and the raccoons will, you know, go find somewhere else to eat. Or it could be that you look up and you see a soffit is loose, and, you know, mommy raccoon has her little babies up in your attic. And then we can gauge from there, what type of service do you need? Is it a private problem animal control person that can come in and safely remove the babies, and mom will find her babies and move on? Or is it a bigger situation than that? Like, you know, we have a lot of marshland. There have been some rat problems in Ipswich, so sometimes it's a bigger situation that needs more of an extermination.
So with a snake, what would you do with it?
It depends on what the whole situation is. Snakes are a little bit harder. You can't remove them from the property.
Why not?
It's against state law. You can't remove wildlife from a property. It has to either stay on the property or be euthanized.
Okay.
That's state law. So snakes are a little bit tougher, but sometimes we, depending on the species, we can work with you and see if we can find ways to make it not a desirable place for them to live.
And I do want to commend Chief. Last week, near the bridge that is by my house, there was a sick raccoon, and the woman who spotted it called the police, and your officer came, and he took care of it in a very, very good way.
Oh, great.
He's the, I didn't catch his name, but he's the bald-headed, completely bald-headed officer.
Officer Dillon.
He did a very nice job.
Wonderful. I'll let him know. Thank you for that feedback.
I appreciated him doing that.
I mean, and she's helped in this transition, since Megan has been working with us, she has done an amazing job with educating our officers because we, we've always fielded the calls for animal control, so they've always come through the police department, and then we send an officer, and then we kind of figure out, do we need the animal control officer or not? She's worked really well with helping us learn how to kind of take on more of that as a police department and how to sift out what we can do, what we have the authority to do, simple stuff like chip readers for dogs. So it's been very helpful so far, having the partnership with somebody who's so professional in her craft, that I really look forward to the potential of this partnership. Yeah.
Great.
And you say Ipswich has a shelter?
We do.
What does that mean? If you find a sick animal, do you bring it to the shelter?
So we have a municipal animal shelter. We house mainly dogs and cats, so anything that I bring in. Or we also work with the Ipswich Humane Group. They're a nonprofit that runs out of our building.
Did you say situat?
The Ipswich Humane Group. So they do mostly cats. They will do dogs from time to time, but it's mostly cats. They help a lot of other animal control officers in the area, mostly like Haverhill, Beverly, some of the surrounding towns. We've taken animals from, I think we've done a few Newbury cats, actually.
So do you place them?
Yep. So any cats get transferred to the Ipswich Humane Group, and they do all the adoptions. Dogs?
And stray cats.
Yes.
Stray cats, yes.
Yes. Or surrenders.
Or surrenders. I just don't want people thinking if their cat gets lost, it's going to the shelter.
And we actually do, so there's no laws on cats. So if I pick up a cat and it doesn't have a microchip, we post it. We actually hold that cat for at least 14 days. By law, we could theoretically adopt that cat out the same day, and it would be 100% legal. We don't do that because people's indoor/outdoor cats go on adventures and don't come home all the time right away, so it takes a while for people to call. But we have, so we have space for dogs and cats. We do have an isolation room for anything that could be sick. We have had a chicken in the shelter. We have had a pony. We had a baby goat once, and a pig.
Vaccines, too.
So are you a non-kill shelter then?
So we will euthanize if it is a severe aggression issue or a severe health issue, but it's pretty rare. I think over the last seven years, I'm going to say probably maybe five euthanasias, four of which were medical issues.
Okay, because a lot of kill shelters, they have the dog for X amount of time, and then it's automatic.
Yeah.
So that's not the case.
No, so we have a dog right now. He's been with us well past the seven days. He's just loving life. If anybody's on Facebook, you can see him. His name is Squish.
What kind is he?
He's a pit bull mix.
Okay.
He was found in Bauxford, so we've been holding him since he was found.
But I do think that's another part, the benefit of this is having it be a professional position with a partnership with multiple communities. She is able to resource all of those kind of other animal resources that can help us be more compassionate and humane.
We do also have, I think, 55 volunteers, 50, 55 volunteers. So, and once an animal is deemed safe and they're vaccinated appropriately, our volunteers are there all the time, socializing, loving on them, posting them on Facebook, trying to find their homes, replacing them for adoption. So it's really, it's really nice. It's a good community deal.
Very good. Any questions? Jeff?
I do. Is this saving us any money?
Nope.
Good answer. And I just, on the, on the budget, I just, from '22 to '24, it's quadrupled the number. What's going on with that? Like in Ipswich, this is, like Ipswich budget, I believe.
I don't know Ipswich's budget, so I can't speak to that. I can only speak to what they're talking about doing in 2024. So with the addition of the three towns, obviously they're going to have to add additional staff. I will say, you know, when you ask, I was being a little bit facetious. So our appropriation and our annual town meeting operating budget is going to be higher than what was previously appropriated for the way we ran things. But what I will tell you is, if we go out to a competitive market and we were interested in hiring our own animal control officer as opposed to getting into this regional type of agreement, and then had to either, I don't know if you'd rent shelter space or built our own shelter, or how we would have to do it, it would absolutely cost us more than the $50,000 we're looking to ask town meeting for.
Okay, and I have a follow-on question.
Yes.
Multiple calls, like multiple emergency calls, maybe. You're going to be spread kind of thin initially. Do you have a plan for that?
Yep. So it happens, and I'm sure the chief can speak to this. It's happened to me before in Ipswich. It's happened to me since I've been doing Rowley and Newbury. We, it's no different than a police department, except I'm only one person. But when our police department gets multiple emergencies and they, all the cruisers are tied up, they're going to call other towns. Obviously, in this case, the other town is me. That's why we've been working so hard with the police departments to help educate the officers. I will say, both Rowley and Newbury officers have been phenomenal in this transition. They, they're like absorbing information like sponges. They really seem to be enjoying it. So that might be a situation where, you know, you're reaching out to the police department, having an officer respond first, and you're just stacking your calls by priority. Emergencies that require, like, super-fast responses, odds are, even if you were, like, sitting at the police department when the call came in, if the call was in Byfield, there's probably a cruiser closer at that time anyway that's going to go there first and just start at least seeing management. So hopefully that answers the question.
Yeah, yeah. So Chief, so we, at the time, Newbury would still absorb, like, possibly the initial call, until you could get on the scene or whatever.
All police calls for animal control have always come through the police, or for decades, have come through the communication center. We will send an officer first and then just make a determination if we need animal control. That will be no different in this partnership than it was when we had ACO La Rock, and that whole idea of what happens if there's multiple emergencies at the same time. We had to run into that as well with ACO La Rock. She wasn't just our animal control officer. She was the animal control officer, you know, for two and a half places, plus had doctor's appointments and personal commitments when she was unavailable. This program actually gives us kind of more access to people over a period of time than if we just had one person who would be tied, you know, tied up. But one of the things we have done, when you haven't been available, is a lot of phone consultation in telling the officers what they need to do or how they need to do it safely while she's...
Like phone a friend.
Kind of like phone an animal control friend, which, again, I can't think of anything that's come up where we haven't been able to manage something until you got there.
Yeah, no, they've done great.
Yeah.
And there have been a few times, I mean, not even just in Newbury, but Ipswich as well, where, you know, you phone a friend. I FaceTimed with residents, like, and they're showing me where the animals stuck. Like, somebody had a hawk stuck in an electric fence. And I'm like, ooh, you're not going to be able to do this by yourself. I was unavailable to respond. I called the station. One of the officers was willing to help. He put on his hawk gloves. He went out, and literally, they FaceTimed me, and I was telling them how to hold the hawk and what to do. Hawk lived. Everybody was safe.
Does the state have resources for things like that?
Sometimes, like during the week.
Like the EPA or something?
The EPOs will assist if they're in the area.
In the area.
But they're not in the area a lot either. They're tighter than we are, I think.
Right now.
Right now, staff-wise. So, but they've been great. I mean, I reach out to them just, like, phone an EPO friend. Do it all the time. So.
Thank you.
It's a team effort.
Alicia, I will, I must say that I worked a lot. I've had a lot of dogs. I've been around Carol a lot. Carol was, at least in my estimation, great. I had a lot of fun with Carol, and she was helpful, and I can see that you will probably be the same. And Carol certainly worked for other towns, as you might, and it seems that there's room for some expansion within this system, and that intrigues me. You know, maybe the assets being rolled together and the amount of volunteers, it, I think it has potential. So I just did, it seems like it's going in a good direction.
I think that this is going to professionalize, like you said, professionalize the ACO. I think you have a breadth of species, education-wise, that can only benefit the town of Newbury. We do have issues on Plum Island, how are you with the piping plovers?
Well, teacher.
That's Audubon. That's really...
We have piping plovers too, but that's mostly Audubon.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be our...
We have a contractor.
And we also, it should be mentioned...
Oh, I'm just saying, because they're birds.
Yeah.
They're bird species.
They're birds, but we have the issue with dogs on the beach.
Dogs on the beach.
You know, we don't have a leash law, but we, dogs aren't allowed on the beach between, you know, 8:30 and 5:30.
It's when breeding season starts, it's contentious out on the island. That's why. That's, that's when I think...
So we, I mean, we, we get calls about piping plovers in Ipswich all the time, just people wanting to know why, like, what is the big deal? We reach out to the Audubon, we network, you know, we educate. I don't go near the piping plovers. We're not allowed to anyway. But, you know, again, it's networking. It's just knowing who to have somebody call. Most people just want to know that you're listening and you have a resource for them, even if you yourself do not have the answer.
But I think your, your education, like I said, and the breadth of species that you work with, I think is only going to be a benefit and enhance the town of Newbury. So thank you for...
And one other observation, too. We do have a bunch of young EPOs in our area from here to Ipswich, and they're, they're very good.
They're great.
So it's good to see it. It could work, all this could work pretty well. Be interesting to see how it's, how it does.
All right. Is there anything else, Tracy, you want to make us aware of with this? Yes, Jerry.
I noticed on the budget, there's $3,000 for consultation. What kind of consultation?
What line are you on?
It's 5310, $3,000.
Is that ours or Ipswich?
That's for necropsies and other. That's for consultant.
Oh, there we go.
I think that's when you take the heads off.
It's for if there's a criminal issue and you need to have necropsy done.
Now, on sick raccoons, because I've had two of them on the, in the last month on the bridge, and, and one was sick and they thought the other one was hit by a car. Do they, do they do an autopsy to find out if you're rabid?
We only submit specimens to the state lab if they have had contact with a human or another domesticated animal.
Okay.
And if that's the case, then yes, well, it's not a necropsy. It's a head removal.
Okay.
You send the head in.
Yeah.
For ages.
But if it's just, if it has had no contact with people, you can't confirm that. We do not test. Unless we have a lot of sick animals, we can call the state and get permission to test something just to see what's going on.
Okay. All right. Thank you. A necropsy, that's what a necropsy, it's an autopsy on an animal. That's what a necropsy is.
One more follow-on question. These, these numbers, and I probably could add them up, but the numbers at the bottom of the percentages that, like, we're going to entail, is that based on fiscal year 2024?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And when does this agreement come into effect?
July 1st.
Okay. All right. Any further questions? All in favor?
You need a motion?
Oh, sorry.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
How's that?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It was nice to meet you.
Thank you. It was nice meeting you. Welcome to Newbury.
Oh, you're the snake.
Jerry will be calling you. Okay, so now we're going to move into executive session.
Good.
So I'm going to move it, and I will need a second. I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to review, discuss, and consider the board's response to the open meeting law complaint against it dated April 2nd, 2023, filed by Jim Moran and on file with the town clerk, whereas discussion of this matter in open session would have a detrimental effect on the board's litigating position, and the chair so declares it, and to reconvene in open session to vote and approve the same.
Second.
Okay. I need a roll call vote. Jay Arcolby?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Jeff Walker, yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Excuse me, we're just voting to go to executive session. Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Alicia Greco? Yes. Um, Alex, should I also read the second one? I move into the...
Is the cameras off?
Well, I think I still need to...
Yeah, you need to read.
I need to read both, right? We're going to read, yeah. So I move it, we enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to review for approval and release the following executive session minutes in accordance with Chapter 30A, Section 22F and G, and to reconvene in open session to vote to approve and release said minutes. One, executive session held on November 8th, 2022 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the chief of police. Two, executive session held on December 6th, 2022 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the police chief and the deputy chief of police. And three, executive session held on February 28th, 2023 pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, the board moves into, enter into executive session to discuss strategy to, with respect to collective bargaining contracts with the Department of Public Works. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Jay Arcolby?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Jeff Walker, yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Alicia Greco? Yes. So we're going to move now into executive session. So I want, Matt, can you shut the TV off, please? We're back in regular session. I'll entertain a motion to approve the response letter provided by town council. Is there a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now the executive session minutes. Move to approve and release the November 8th executive session meeting minutes. Is there, I move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a vote? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. Is there a move to approve and release the December 6th, 2022 executive session meeting minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I move to approve and release the February 28th, 2023 executive session meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Julie, this is, if I can have it. Okay, so now I'm going to move back to the regular agenda. I have, I signed the PR 2323 for Julie O'Brien. We have grants, gifts, and donations. Council on Aging donation from June Brogan, $15. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A Council on Aging donation for Angus Sampson for $10. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. New business, we have the Surf Rider Foundation of Plum Island Beach Cleanup, April 23rd, 2023. Chris Borgati, are you here, Chris?
I am.
Come on up.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, Chris Borgati, 10 Old Road. Pleasure to be here. And, yeah, like, we have a scheduled beach cleanup. We're trying to coincide with the six other cleanups that are happening throughout New England.
Yeah.
And the idea was to do one in New England after, or, excuse me, in Plum Island after being approached by a couple of local businesses, the Cottage Surf Shop and the Sunset Grill. So it just coincided that this invitation to work with them and this effort to synchronize these cleanups across New England made the April 23rd date seem to be a likely, a good, a good opportunity to do it. So, yeah, we've done, we do beach cleanups all across the state as part of this organization. Surf Rider Foundation is about 40 years old, because it turned 40 next year. Our focus is basically... Uh, our focus is, uh, basically the protection and appreciation of, of the ocean, uh, waves and, and beaches. And, um, we, uh, do this through a pretty active grassroots network across the country. I am the chair of the Massachusetts chapter.
Okay.
So, our footwork, we do a lot of policy-type stuff, legislative-type stuff. We also do these beach cleanups about once a month, um, across the state. Uh, two weeks ago, we were in Manchester by the Sea, uh, we did a beach cleanup there. I think we, it was actually a, um, a significant one. We ended up collecting about a hundred and thirty pounds of trash, which, which is unusual for most of our cleanups. Uh, all the, all the, um, garbage trash that is collected gets, um, uh, put into a, um, a data set that is shared nationally. We have one of the longest-running, um, uh, ocean debris, um, data sets, uh, out there. So, all, everything we collect gets, um, logged and we track that, um, for, for our work, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah, um, two things to beware of. I'm sure since you're involved, uh, we have a plover population.
Yeah.
And they're intensely monitored.
Of course, right.
So you folks want to be careful of that, familiar self, familiarize yourself with that, and also, not the entire beach in Newbury is public.
Right.
Parts of it are private, so please do your best to respect people's backyards.
Yes.
Because it has been an issue in the past.
Yeah.
Not with you guys, just.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I, I pop by the beach today just to sort of see, well, one, the dredging operation, to see what the landscape of the beach looked like, but, but also to note those, the, the section that was cordoned off for the, for the plovers, so, yeah.
Great, and you'll see where Newbury Town beaches are.
Yes.
We only have a couple of them.
Yep. And so all the trash that we do collect, we've already made the arrangement, um, with those businesses to use their dumpsters.
Great.
Which is, which is nice. And also, they will be providing parking, um, for, for the cleanup, which also works out quite well.
How many people are you expecting?
Typically, we receive, um, we'd have about twenty to thirty people come out for these cleanups.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so.
Many hands make light work.
Yeah, yeah.
So how many organizations are you involved in now?
Just, just the two, and I should, I should thank everyone, um, right off the, I should have, right off the bat, for my day job. Um, the town was nice enough to provide, allow me to use Mantle Parking Lot for a cleanup that I did at, at, uh, Burns Wildlife Management Area a couple of weeks ago in conjunction with the state. In that particular cleanup, we had over a hundred people, we had over a hundred people register. So it was clear that we could not park at Burns. And so, um, parking at Mantle allowed us to shuttle people over, thanks to, uh, Governor's Academy, who gave us a minibus. In that particular cleanup, and again, working with the state, um, we removed about thirteen hundred pounds of trash just from that southern, uh, portion of Burns, which is pretty remarkable.
Wow.
Yeah, so.
That's big.
Yeah, so, um, so I, I should acknowledge that and, and thank the, the town. Rarely do I, um, uh, work, whether it be for Surf Rider, uh, or for the day job in the town that I live in. Uh, it just seems that, uh, there's just been, uh, a couple instances where, um, I'm a regular.
Well, thank you, thank you for keeping Newbury clean.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, it's a, like, like I said, um, it, it's a, it's a, it's a great place to be. Uh, and after being here for seventeen years, I, I don't see us going anywhere else, so.
It's an awesome town.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Mary?
Dana?
Kayla? Okay. I don't think we need a vote.
No.
Thank you so much. Good luck.
And I should note too, that we carry our own liability assurance and all that sort of stuff, so, but.
Some council will like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a public property use request for Newbury Port Coral Society banner for concert. It's on the upper green backstop, April twentieth to May eighth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a business license renewal for Josette Walker. Anyone who recues?
Let me get out of here. Oh, that person is.
So we have a business license renewal for Josette Walker, DBA Josette Ads and Loom, uh, one seventy-three High Road, General Business.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you can get them back.
You can come back.
I need to review and approve, the next one is review and approve a commercial clam permit application for Leonard Dobson, twelve Old Point Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's some one-day liquor licenses, we'll take them one at a time. So they're all at the Byfield Community Arts Center, Seventh Central Street. The first one is for Parker Wheeler's Blues Party Reunion on April sixteenth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next one is, uh, Idlewild with Greenhead, April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Third one is Liz Frame and the Kickers, April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Julie, I should say these are all in order, correct? Date-wise, yes. Yes, yes. Oh, you mean all the things, yes, they have all their requirements, yes, sorry. B C A, that's right, B C A C, Seventh Central, again, John Fogerty Live, um, April twenty-eighth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to make note, uh, John Fogerty's a Triton alumni, local guy. Anyone want to go out and support him, that'd be great, he's good at what he does.
Great. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, we have Three Blocks East Live on April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next is to approve the Recreational Committee's Central Street Recreation and Environmental Resource Area Policy Handbook. So that was part of our agenda. Really, I don't know if you want to call it a handbook, the name of the, of the draft is here, is the town of Newbury.
I'll make a motion, so we can discuss.
All right, yeah.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, the town of Newbury's Central Street Recreation and Environmental Resource Area Use of Facility Guide, Guidelines. I don't think it's really a handbook, but. We have the, uh, two members of the Rec Committee here, the chair and secretary, the treasurer, Max Yant and David Brol. Yeah. Come on up and can you talk about this policy?
Lot of work. So, just even before I start, I just want to say that this goes way back, and, um, it goes back to people like Mark worked on it, Mike Valpon, who's no longer in the group, Celine Maldoni, Mariah Lucy, Dave Dempsey, uh, Lucian Denzmore, who was the first high school kid that was on our group, Sidney Coro filled in for us from the COA.
COA.
Um, Ben Norton, who's on the group now, Mary Anastasio, and Courtney Boudreaux. So, like, all these people spend time and energy and effort getting this together. We pulled our hair out a lot of nights trying to finish it up, so.
Well, well done, you've done a job. The town council has vetted this, she's made her comments, and kicked it back to the Rec Committee, who has since approved it and sent it to us for our approval. Are there any questions from the board? Jerry?
Yes. Yeah, I have a number of questions. You make reference on page two to seasonal permit holders, but you don't, you don't indicate who can become a, a seasonal permit holder and how much it costs.
Mark, do you want to speak to that?
Going through the document, you'll see that there are different timeframes, timeline, winter, spring, summer, fall. And we didn't, uh, what we want to do is break it up for the different sports at that time. That's part of the application process, that's how you become the seasonal permit holder, or permit holder, as we call it, for these, the fields. There's an application process embedded in this document.
How much does it cost to become?
It depends on the length of time, the, your status. Again, it's all embedded in the document.
Yep.
If you, uh, it, it ranges from ten dollars to twenty-five dollars per hour of use.
So page eight, Jerry, has the, has the.
Yeah, so, we, we set it up essentially, we sort of started out with, um, you know, these, uh, sort of a group of people that have been used at the field for years. And, um, they, as Mark has said many times, they've been great stewards for that field, and they, you know, there's a lot of times we don't have. They know when the field is being overused and they back off on stuff like that. So, when we were trying to set up this sort of a framework with this, we wanted those users to have, um, because they've been so good, to sort of have first priority, um, to be able to renew every year. And then the other thing is just, you know, have availability, and so with a basketball court, um, we're sort of starting new. And, um, the idea is just to have lots of kids out there enjoying themselves.
So the seasonal refers to spring season, fall season, like fall soccer, and then winter season, and then summer, they're supposed to rest the fields, but.
Yeah, we have people that want to use during the summer too, but, yeah.
At this time, summer use is limited, there might be a, um, in the years past, there'd be a small soccer group coming in for a couple of weeks, but typically they take up half of the field, and there had been a plan in place for years now where one field would get extra care, and we'd rotate it on a, a four-year schedule.
So would the permit, the seasonal permit holder typically be an individual, or would it be like a soccer team or?
It would be an entity that is, it could be an individual, it could be, uh, uh, an organization that has it, uh, get the non-exclusive use of the property.
Okay. And, uh, on several places, you indicate that, um, the organ, the group or the organization may not charge any admission, and that no tickets will be sold or collections taken, and no, no items will be sold, including concessions. But yet, in the beginning, you talk about vendors, that to me seems to be a contradiction.
We talked about two different issues.
Okay.
One is, there's a concession area in the building. What, what we're looking to prevent is somebody coming in and renting, uh, and getting a permit to use the fields, and then turning around, pe, turning around and having other people pay them to use the field.
Okay, so sublet almost.
You can't, you're not allowed to sublet. There is a concession area, uh, it's part of the, the building, uh, of the field house. What we want to do is have somebody come in and, and again, there's embedded in this is a separate area for the concessions area, which if there is interest for somebody to, uh, we can send out for a vendor, or if one of our local organizations wanted to use it. We're more concerned about people, um, using, um, using the property without us understanding what they're using it for.
And profiting from it, right?
Profiting from it.
Well, I guess, I, I, I guess I don't see the harm in, if you have a soccer team and, you know, if they have a bake sale at, at the field house, what's the harm in that?
Well, that's allowable in here, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I tried to organize this so that each area is consistent within the whole document, and then yet separate on its own. In other words, if they want to have a bake sale, which they, they can do, we would be able to, they, they would be able to let us know what's going on. I, I think we're getting, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what your question is. Is, are you seeing an inconsistency?
Yeah, I am. Because it says, well, on page two, um, area nonprofit groups can apply to use the concessions area as a fundraising tool. However, on play, page three, which I just read, said, you know, no tickets, no admissions or collections, no items to be sold, including concessions. So that to me tells me that they can't, they can't have a bake sale there. And yet, on page two.
Yes, you said number four, is that the one you're reading from?
Uh, number three, page three. Page three, uh, paragraph four.
Okay. Because I'm, what I'm reading is unless specifically requested on the consent form, is that the one that you're starting off with? So, unless specifically requested on the consent form by the applicant and approved by all the applicable departments and boards, it is understood.
Okay, yeah, you can't. So, so if they apply, if they know ahead of time, they can apply?
Yes, that's.
Yep.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, that, that was part of the deal with them. We got this beautiful field house with a kitchen, and trying to parse out that and make things, it, it's, there's a lot of things we could do with it, and, um, you know, we're, we're touching in new areas, so we're trying to, you know, figuring out if a group wants to use that and use it to make money for their group. They, they go through us and it would be fine.
Okay, and I know there's some language in there talking about a concessions manager?
Yes, if, if there's, well, again, I need to know specifically where you're coming from.
Okay.
You're talking about a vendor or concession manager?
Well, you tell me, because it's your, it's your document, and you're talking about vendor and a concession manager.
The idea is, we want it to be thinking ahead and look at a variety of options that may present ourselves. Instead of writing a document for the very here and now, and you have to come back to the board and reapply, or say to the persons we don't know, we try to be all-inclusive. One of the ideas that we looked at, um, organizations around from north of Boston to probably west of Lowell, looking at what different options people have. Some, uh, towns have somebody actually run a concession.
Right.
They put it out to bid.
Yeah.
And here's your vendor, they can, they, they're going to run it.
And they'll pay us a certain fee.
Other organizations, for example, at Triton, they have the PTA or the athletic boosters run their concession. We want to be able to accommodate both. We also want to make sure that they're accountable to us and have a point person, regardless if it's a concession manager or a vendor, accountable to us and to the town. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay. And then my, my other question, um, is the insurance. You're talking, you know, a million, two hundred million in the aggregate, and I, I guess my question is, why, why is that much insurance needed?
There's never enough insurance.
Yeah.
Well, actually, there is, because, um, you know, you, you specifically say that, where, where was that?
Page five.
Yeah.
Yeah, page five. But you also, you also say that, you know, they have to get insurance to cover the town. However, in, I think it was paragraph ten, yeah, paragraph ten, you say that they have to, they have to sign a release which discharges and/or otherwise indemnifies the town of Newbury. So I guess my concern is, if, if you're saying that the town, you can't sue the town if anyone gets hurt, I guess my concern is, asking that high a sure, insurance, is that going to cripple some of these volunteer, you know, athletic groups? That's my concern.
I, I think this is standard operating procedure for the town.
It's recommended by our insurance carrier, Maya, Massachusetts.
That probably came from town council.
It came from town council.
I know, yeah. And I'm an attorney and I like to read things, so.
Well, I, I appreciate it.
So, but the Maya, this is a Maya recommendation, and I believe it's like for all town events that we have here, because.
It is.
Yeah, and if we don't have, and the, and the waiver comes into play if you have a group that doesn't have the insurance, I believe, they can sign the waiver, waive the town?
Right.
Would that happen with the cars?
Yeah, we, we use that with, um, we had an ultimate disc group come in, and they.
I'm sorry, you had a what?
Ultimate disc, a group of individuals who wanted to do ultimate disc.
Play ultimate.
And they were not an organized group. So we got signatures from all the participants to ensure that, um, my town is protected.
Okay, all right, all right. I, I, I just wondered why it was necessary, because I believe that the, the limit of liability, municipal liability is a hundred thousand dollars, so. I mean, if that's what.
I don't, that's what town council does.
I, I remember before, it was, uh, the, rates were lower, and when we gave this first, uh, years ago, like five years ago, we were asked to increase it, because here's, here's the language that town council wanted at that time.
It's, it's consistent, like, with construction, like, I, I ran construction and it was, you know, that's kind of insurance values we had to have if we worked on someone's house, so, it's.
But I hope the soccer group isn't falling off someone's roof.
No, 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 but, but, you know, yeah.
Accidents happen.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Jeff, do you have any questions? Dana?
Um, is this the first one of these we've ever had?
This is the first policy coming up from them, yeah.
Yeah, we, we did the.
Oh, no.
The fields were originally, originally put in place, um, I'm going to say about six, seven years ago. Once the field house was. Once the field house was.
Built.
Well, even before it was started, but we started working on this document in anticipation of it. And we continued to work on it again for years, and then we added a basketball court. And that's, that's why we're saying the facility is to be more encompassing, so this is the continuation of, of what we had for the fields.
Yeah, we came in and we had soccer fields. And then our next thing was to get that field house done, so then we added the field house to the, and again, it's, you, you're kind of like making decisions on the field usage, but now you have to figure out how to have usage inside the field house and how to make that equitable with all these groups, and then also we added the basketball court. So it's, it, it just keeps growing, and so it, yeah.
I understand.
Yeah, heads are spinning, so.
I guess the one thing that caught my attention was, you know, lightning, lightning within five. Does, who monitors that? Is, 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 is there somebody that's going to call somebody and say, there's lightning within five, you got to get off the field?
I think it's.
Because that's a safety issue.
Yeah, I think it's.
It's a great safety issue, and if, and all the organized sports that use the fields, whether it's Premier Soccer League, or the lacrosse leagues, or the soccer leagues, they have their own protocols, which say if there is lightning or thunder heard, you need to vacate the field. They have their own protocols, I can give them to you if you want.
That's okay, I just, I'm just.
But, yeah, we, we, I've worked closely with these clubs in understanding what their requirements are, to make sure that it's consistent, that our policy is more, more restrictive, if you will, than what they're going through. But they have rules about what, when they can be on the field and when they can't.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No questions, just, I think it's an excellent document. You guys have done a ton of work, and, you know, it's been a few years in the making, and especially the two of you have stuck right through this to the end, and.
But, you know, the other group, I mean, the people that were, they were just, they were amazing.
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's just like one of those things, I go back and I say, these people were the, sort of the, the crust of starting this whole thing, and it still, you know, it still grows.
Yeah.
Do you have any other policies that you need to come up to us right now? This is the last one, right? We have the fields, and you, we have the, this is now the field house, but until there's other things going on down that field, this will be it, right?
This is it, for now.
This should encompass everything on those.
Yeah.
On that property.
Okay.
And that was the intent, is to, again, have.
Is there a form that has to be made for this? Julie?
Everything seems to be online.
Yeah, I think it'll probably go online.
I remember reviewing this, and there was a missing form. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I think that was when they have to sign up for the fields, is that the link, I think it was just more of a link wasn't.
Okay.
Maybe it wasn't active.
So you're not, this is, this is complete now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
One final question?
Yes?
I noticed under Group D, you, you charged them five thousand dollars for a weekend to, to use the, the.
Yes.
Parking lot?
No. Five thousand dollars is for the.
Use of the whole field.
Oh, the.
Use, use of.
For the whole thing.
One, two, three, four, five, eighty-five B for the entire weekend.
Weekend, yeah.
And that, I think, is the holiday weekend.
Okay. And how often do you get someone bellying up to the bar with five thousand?
We used to.
There used to be, there used to be a lacrosse tournament for many years, organized by the Kentucky Lacrosse Program.
And they would, they, they had no problem paying five thousand?
Yeah, these attorneys.
This was before then.
Yeah, attorneys, I think they were, we were doing a lot of, we were getting requests from a lot of tournaments.
Okay.
Before COVID, and so now, you know, and there's, there's other sort of things.
There's other costs that go into it.
Yeah.
About ten thousand dollars for.
Yeah, for a group to run a attorney.
And it, but it hasn't come back since term, since COVID?
Talking to the different organizations that run tournaments, whether it's the Mass Soccer League, the Mass Lacrosse, it's a lot of money to start a program here. They prefer to go out to Fort Devens. Soccer has their own twelve, fourteen fields out in Lancaster, where many teams will actually go to do their practices, and a lot of teams from the Boston Newton, friends of mine, go out to Lancaster for practices and tournaments.
It's, it was, and it still is, an idea that eventually, you know, this will come around, and people will want to use it for the weekend, and, and it's also, what we've had to do is juggle when the fields were available for that. So, you know, during the, during the height of the soccer lacrosse season, fall and spring, it's hard to open up a weekend for them. But in summertime, and then it's just getting someone to set up if they want to run an event, so we're hoping.
Well, good night.
I'd like to really recognize that we have a great asset, and I'd like to thank you guys and the people before you, and all the people, you know, with all the work that was done on the building and everything. I'd like to thank everyone involved, it's a great thing.
We have grass fields.
And the asset is eighty-one Central Street.
Yeah, we just.
If you guys weren't there, we'd.
You guys are stewards of that, but, you know, it's, it's, there's not a lot of natural grass fields like that. It's a beautiful location, and it's rare.
And I guess the highway guys, we should thank, too, for the work.
Oh, yeah, amazing.
Well, they did a great, you know, this year, knowing beforehand.
Anything we have a problem, we call James, and he's like, yep, take care of it. So it's kind of like to have that.
The whole concept is pretty cool.
Yeah, yeah. It's not a bad committee, if people are out there and they want to join a committee, it's really not a bad committee, now that we're done with this, too. Before, I wouldn't suggest it, but now I do.
Uh, Jayla? We have a motion.
I move, I move to approve the Central Street Recreational Environmental Resource Area Use of Facilities Guidelines.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can sleep now.
You birthed a baby.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night, thanks for your patience. Okay, so under Old Business, we have to discuss April twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, meeting location and time. I did have an opportunity to go take a look at twenty-five High Road, and there's still equipment down in the basement, there's the cable equipment down there, it's really not safe for people to wander through. So I'm going to have, hold the second informational session on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, right here at twelve Cantway, from nine to eleven a.m.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town administrators report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You may already be aware, but River Street is currently closed. We had a determination by Mass DOT, as well as our engineers, so we got two, two sets of eyes on it, that it was deemed unsafe for vehicular passage. Excuse me, the DPW is currently working on a design engineering grant proposal. So once that's completed, we'll be ready to get it out to bid, but the expectation is that the closure would be in excess of a year.
Wow.
As we work on that. And that whatever it takes for construction after that. Last week, we opened bids for the plumbing contractor for the Plum Island restroom facility, and the DPW Director, James Saret, reports that the facility will likely be open for part of the season, so they're working on that. And I'm also excited to be one of the communities chosen to participate in the Local Finance Commonwealth Fellowship Program, I think it's technically called. We have a Rowley resident, her name is Jessica Greeney, who will be joining our finance team for two months in July and August. And she currently attends Northern Essex Community College, and she'll be working for us and also for the Town of Rowley throughout those two months. And they, basically, each of the fellows that participate in this program, they undergo like a four-week training program at the Department of Revenue with the state, and then they, they transition to the work-based learning here in the communities. So we'll provide her with the hands-on training, she'll learn, she'll learn municipal finance,